Welcome to the Town Council Meeting. Here tonight, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocations. Susan, please come forward. Susan's with Bahai.
Thank you very much for letting me come in. This is a prayer by the Bahai faith and it's called "America." Oh thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love; these minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. Oh God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees, even as it has inspired into material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to uprise the standard of oneness of humanity and to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. Oh God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestowal, Abdou Bahai.
Thank you, Ms. Powers.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember LaGee.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Oshambo.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Excellent. Welcome, everyone. First item I get to read into the record, a proclamation declaring September 17th, 2009 Constitution Commemoration Day. Whereas the Constitution of the United States was signed 222 years ago on September 17th, 1787, to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. And whereas this cherished document, born of the spirited contention and gracious compromise, provided a natural gateway to that study of our past, which may be enlightening to the charting of our future. And whereas we all share the blessings granted by the Constitution and the responsibility of ensuring that those blessings fall upon our people, and whereas we mark the 222nd anniversary of our nation's founding document, we celebrate the effort, dedication, and wisdom of our founders and the blessings of liberty that resulted from their labors. Now therefore, I, J.T. Schlumpf, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2009, as Constitution Commemoration Day and hereby encourage the citizens of Fountain Hills to study the duties of citizenship and renew their dedication to the principles of the Constitution dated this 20th day of August, 2009. There is a Constitution commemoration celebration down in Scottsdale that's supported by Scottsdale Area Association of Realtors. And last year, our community won the majority of the prizes, and these are students from our local school district that wrote essays and created artwork to commemorate the Constitution. So that'll be coming up again soon. Unfortunately, it happens during, I think, our next council meeting. So we've got a council-- former councilmember Ed Key that's going to be going there on our behalf. But there'll be an abundance of our school kids down there, and I hope they'll do very well. They did well, as I mentioned, but they also did better than both Scottsdale and Paradise Valley School Districts. So the Constitution's alive and well in our school district, so that's good to see. First public appearance we have tonight, a presentation from Ms. Julie Giddy, our Deputy Town Manager, as a financial update to the fiscal year end. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. This report is for the fiscal year that ended on June 30th, 2009. And with the year that come to a close, we are pleased to report that despite the challenges of the last fiscal year, we were able to end the year with a positive fund balance. Thanks in part to the leadership and the cooperation of the staff, we were able to make decisions early on that helped us achieve this goal. Although we did end with a positive fund balance, the current year that we're in now, there's still a rough road ahead. As of the end of the year, the general fund had an ending fund balance to the plus of $100,000. Per council policy, that $100,000 will be transferred to the Capital Projects Fund, where it will be available for future appropriation. In the Streets Fund, there's a balance left over of $200,000. In the Downtown Economic Development Fund, there's a balance of $1 million. And the development fees, the revenue we took in, we had one minor project, we took in $100,000, and we spent $100,000, so that fund balance remained unchanged at 2.3 million. Similar with the debt service, which is the property tax and the municipal property corporation, what revenues came in went out for the debt service, leaving a fund balance of 1.2. The Capital Projects Fund, the revenues were $1.4 million. And again, those revenues come from construction sales tax, which is still coming in from projects that were started, got building permits a year or two ago. So those should probably start to taper off. But the ending fund balance in the Capital Projects Fund is $10.4 million. In the General Fund, our revenues compared to last fiscal year are down $1.7 million compared to what we actually budgeted. They're down $1.1 million. So accordingly, our expenditures had to be cut the same. And this picture sort of tells us and gives us an indication of how the economy is doing, our local economy, which is driven a lot by construction activity. And you can see that it's still bumping along the bottom. Our major revenues for the General Fund, all the down arrows, the state sales tax is down, $400,000. The only area that went up was in the state income tax, and that's because there's a lag between when the state collects the income tax and distributes it. It's a two-year lag. So although we had more income tax than the prior year, we know that the next two years are going to be down significantly. And our expenditures again have to meet the revenues. If we don't have the revenues, we have to cut expenditures, and we were actually under budget by $1.3 million. In our local sales tax collection, two major portions of our local sales taxes from construction activity and retail. And you can see that the construction activity increased more than what we budgeted because, again, because of the lag time, it's a challenge to try to budget how much construction sales tax is going to come in from building permits. So although building permits are way down, we're still collecting the construction sales tax. So we actually took in 170% of what we budgeted. The retail activity was up about 100-- I'm sorry, 8% over the prior year, or the budget. So in summary, we continue to monitor revenues to ensure that no expenditures are authorized without adequate resources to pay for them. We'll continue that policy as we go forward because we don't expect that this year is going to be a whole lot better than last year. So we will monitor and make sure that before we commit to any expenditures, we'll have the resources to pay for them. And there may be mid-year adjustments necessary depending on how revenues come in. If we find that even though we budgeted significantly less, if we find that there's even more, less revenues than what we anticipated, we will be making those adjustments at mid-year as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Giddy. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Dickey.
Thank you. Julie, the residential permit activity ends in January. Do you have any idea what happened in March and June? Do you have any kind of an idea? Because it looked like it was going up there to--
Sorry, that should actually say 2009. That should be-- those are every other month? September, October?
Well, September, November, January. Because it was kind of confusing, so I went back to the '06 one, and it looks like it's starting July, like a fiscal year's full-- July, September, November, January, March, May. So I don't really know what the two M's are.
March and May.
March and May, and July, and September, November, same deal. But so it looks like it's ending on January, well, would be '09, but in other words, that's eight months ago. So I was wondering about the permit activity between January and now.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilperson Dickey, I think the labels at the bottom are wrong. The chart is correct. But it's the labels at the bottom. So in other words, that last one where we had two building permits, we had two building permits in the month ending June.
June of '09.
June of '09. That's what this chart goes through, June of '09. But so if you can--
Okay.
Those months on the bottom are incorrect, sorry.
And then, Mayor, if I could continue just a couple of things. The percentage, there was an article in the paper about cities recently, like yesterday, I think, and it was talking about percentages. For some reason, they seem to do a June to a June. So they looked at their June sales tax collections from '08 and compared them to their June sales tax collections of '09. And they were fairly big cities. And they ranged from 9% less to 22% less. And maybe this is unfair, but do you know, since ours went down about 9%, which would look pretty good, but I wonder why, is it a valid comparison since they were just doing like a one-month chunk of June of '08 to a one-month chunk to June of '09? And we're really looking at the whole year. So I don't know if that's statistically an okay thing to do or not.
Mayor, councilperson, without looking at where their data came from, you know, this is done from year to year, a full year of last fiscal year and a full year of the year before. So it's not taking the month of June '08 to the month of June '09. It's actually the whole fiscal year, is what this one does.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it would probably be a little bit difficult to make that kind of a comparison. But if it was at all statistically valid, at least we were on the lower end of what I think has been happening to some of the other cities. And lastly, talking about next year and budgeting for next year, we've got the state budget that was sent to the governor today, the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine bills. And one of them in particular will-- well, two of them affect cities and towns pretty significantly. So just, I guess, as a matter of general information, like when you talk about construction sales tax, that could be affected, obviously impact fees would be affected. And then the VLT shift is now back, because remember, we talked about how those things were gone when the governor vetoed. But now, it's a big question mark, they're not going back to the floor until Monday, Tuesday. And so, and obviously, I think, waiting for the governor to do some action. So I think, and I know I kind of threw this out there earlier this week, but I was hoping maybe at some point we could get some numbers to how this would affect the Town of Fountain Hills, because some of the other cities have come out and given an idea of how this will impact them. And so I would be curious to know, because that would help us plan, at least for even some of the more immediate expenditures that we think we're going to do.
Mayor, councilperson, if you're talking about the vehicle license tax, the VLT, our impact would be about $75,000 that we would have to find someplace in our general fund or make cuts.
Okay. And if there's a construction sales tax and things like that are going to depend on how much activity there is in the next year too, on how much less we will be able to take in if some of these things do come to pass. Thanks. Thank you.
Anyone else? Question for staff here? You do. Councilman LaGee.
Thank you, Mayor. Along the same lines of Councilwoman Dickey's inquiry regarding predictable loss of income moving forward, you had mentioned that income tax revenue predictably will be down next year. And I know that we get those numbers sometimes in advance and they're lagged. Do we have a sense for what that number is yet?
Mayor Schlumpf, Councilman LaGee, I think we budgeted $300,000 less in '09-10 in income tax for this year.
And was that based on--
That was based on information provided by the state, because of course, they know ahead of time.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good. And again, yeah, that's lagging. That's why this year's income tax was actually higher than the prior years. But we would expect the next year to be lower and perhaps even the next year to be lower than that.
Next year.
Thank you very much. All right, move on to call to the public. Do you have any cards for a call to the public?
Yes, Mayor. One, Richard Kloster.
All right, Mr. Kloster, welcome.
Mayor and councilmembers, good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to bring three subjects to your attention. The first of these would be to compliment the town staff and Giuliani in particular for achieving on budget, if you will, for expenditures ending in June. I think that's quite an accomplishment with everything else you've got in front of you to manage that situation. So I know you had a great deal of input on that with Mr. Davis's help and guidance. I had a question related to the budget, though, which is, the news about the lawsuit was very disturbing, and you've probably by now seen The Times and how many people have commented about, gee, why don't we change the attitude and be more negotiable? I don't know all the details, but I do know that after reading some of the articles, I was disappointed too, because I don't know where that money comes from, half a million refund of taxes that were paid, apparently, on this last one. But I'm fully aware that before any lawsuit is initiated upon the recommendation of the attorney, Mr. McGuire, and the town manager, Mr. Davis, you all make the decision whether to proceed or not. But I'll just leave that, just a comment, and I hear a lot of rumbling and talk about it. The second item is, I say "we," we have heard that the town is going ahead with a plan to select a trash and recycle contract, or, if you will, for all of Fountain Hills, including gated communities. And you know that I represent Eagle Mountain, as well as an HOA coalition of gated communities. And we are most concerned that the town signs a contract with the sheriff's office to conduct routine patrols, et cetera, on all the streets. Not every day, every street, of course, but in neighborhoods. However, there's a specific exclusion for gated communities. But when it comes to trash and recycle, I think the direction is, well, we want to include, we don't want anyone to go by without having the services of the contractor we the town select. I think that seems to say that there's two standards, one for protection, but when it comes to something like trash and recycle, never mind, the gated communities are going to have to toe the mark. Now, as you already know, I've talked about this before, and Eagle Mountain Community has a contract with Allied Waste for roughly, I know, and I'll hurry up, $11, and I think the town's looking at costs that would be double that. And I'm sure, still not sure about billing, how it's going to go, but I'm sure you folks will address that. Well, since the time is gone, I'll end my comments there, and I thank you very much for listening. Hope to hear from you.
No, I'll reach out to you, Mr. Kloster. I think some of the data you have is incorrect.
Okay.
I'll reach out to you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else? All right. Move on to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
Move. Second.
All right, roll call, Beth.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Aye.
Councilmember LaGee.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oshambo.
Aye.
Mayor, 7-0.
Thank you very much. Move on to the regular agenda. We're going to hear a presentation on items 11, 12, and 13, all in one fail swoop, from Brian. Item 11 is consideration of special events being coordinated by the Fountain Hills Parks and Rec Department for a movie in the park, "Ballet Under the Stars," homecoming parade, and homecoming tailgate party. Then we'll hear about the special event application for Oktoberfest by the Southwest German Society, Sons of Amvets, and the Fountain Hills Elks Lodge to be held at Fountain Park on September 25 through 26, and which will require the closing Saguaro Boulevard north of the avenue to Palisades. And then the next item is consideration of special event liquor license applications submitted by Sam Coffey of Sons of Amvets for the Oktoberfest event held at Fountain Park, September 25 through 26. Welcome, Brian.
Welcome, Mayor and council. I think that was my whole presentation, so thanks.
Now--
I've got some pictures, though. We are going to talk about five different events this evening. As you know, this is a very busy time for us, September and October. We really get going with all the different things in town for the community and for the visitors that come to Fountain Hills. The first thing up is Saturday, September 12th, is our movie in the park. We're going to be showing Walt Disney's Bolt, which is very good if you haven't already seen it. I own it, so I can watch it anytime I want. It's the first Disney movie that we're doing out at the park. Disney's pretty restrictive about what they can do as far as time of year and audience size and things like that, so we were pretty lucky that we met their stipulations, so we were able to show the first Bolt, or the first Disney movie, which is Bolt, and pretty excited about that. As you know, the movies have been fully funded by sponsorships from local businesses. Parks and Rec Commissioner Natalie Varela and a local realtor here in town is responsible for securing all our sponsors and marketing. And this program, over the last three or four years that we've been doing it, wouldn't have been possible without Natalie, so we thank her for all our efforts. As you said, Saguaro Boulevard is closed those days, and that's the day of the event, from 5 to 9, and that's for pedestrian safety mostly. And at the event, we do have food vendors if anybody wants to grab a last-minute snack, but we encourage people to bring picnic baskets and blankets and things like that to enjoy the event. The next event is the Ballet Under the Stars on Thursday, September 24th, at 7:00 p.m. This is a change we had marketed in the loop, it was 7:30, but it is starting a little earlier. So for those people watching on Channel 11, it is a 7 o'clock start, and we're going to advertise that in The Times and through the Scottsdale Republic to make sure people know of the earlier start time. This is the fourth year that Ballet Arizona has been coming out to Fountain Park, and we are the first of their four free performances this year. So they've downsized from about eight performances in the past year, so to be one of four is actually pretty exciting, and to kick it off is great, too. And again, Saguaro Boulevard closes from 5 to 9 as people kind of park in the downtown area and cross Saguaro Boulevard. Another big one that we're working on, and some of our committee members are here--
[laughter]
That was the ceremonial tapping of the keg, and we hope that Jay and all the council members can be out there. But Christine and Jack Colley are here, as well as Sam Coffey from our committee. It is made up of four different, oops, yeah, four different groups, Town of Fountain Hills, Parks and Rec is helping, it's Helpless German Society, Amvets, and the Fountain Hills Elks. And that's been a great committee to work on, and I think we're going to have a lot of success this year. Getting a lot, we got started a lot earlier on the planning of the event, and I think that's going to translate into just a great event over the two days. This is the second year of the reorganized celebration at Fountain Park. Anyone who was out there last year probably knows that it was, there was probably about a six-year gap between the last Oktoberfest and the one we had. And I think it's a little bit different, but it was definitely a success, so looking forward to that again this year. Some of the highlights, it's a family event, it's not just come out for beers, it's definitely, we've got kids' activities, there'll be some coloring activities, we do have non-stop music with the Guggenbach Bomm-- did I say that correctly? They're actually from Germany, so we have a real German band here, and we also have another band, so there won't be any downtime in music, so that should keep the crowd pretty excited. We do have a very authentic menu with our, the broth, sauerkraut, potato salad, and strudel, and our Wurstener beer, which was very good.
Yeah.
And proceeds from the, will benefit the presenting organizations and their charities. I know Sister Cities got some things last year, and I was just talking with Sam about some of the other charities that Amvets gave money to. And we will be closing Saguaro Boulevard from 3 to 11 each day. The event is from 5 to 10 p.m., so again, to get pedestrians across the avenue, or Saguaro Boulevard. Homecoming Parade, Thursday, September 30th, from 5:30 to 6:30 out here on the Avenue of the Fountains. As you know, this is only our second homecoming parade, and I thought last year was a pretty big success. We had almost 30 entries. Again, the council members were involved, and you're invited again this year, and I know a lot of people have already responded. So that was very exciting, and I think the kids and the organizations are even more excited this year because now they know what to expect as far as the parade goes. So we're working with Falcon Athletic Boosters, and I think we've got all our little kings worked out from last year, so we're looking forward again to another very successful event. We're providing in-kind support through staff time, traffic control, and street closures. The Avenue of the Fountains will be closed from Saguaro to La Montana. We're going to close eastbound a little bit earlier than westbound as we start setting up with the floats and things like that. But we're, most of the floats and entries will be staged on Fertile River, Paul Norton Parkway, which will be closed just past the Holiday Inn, so that won't affect them. And we're encouraging the town merchants through Lori Gary and some committee members that she's been working with to get involved and really kind of make a big deal out of it down the avenue. So we're excited about that and hoping that the residents come out and support the high school kids and their families. And more homecoming, the Tailgate Party, which has been going on, I think I figured out since about 1998, so this is our 11th year, is that Friday, October 2nd, from 5 to 7 at Golden Eagle Park. And that's just more or less kind of a big kind of pepper alley, get everybody excited before the game, get them into the park, and then they just walk right over to the stadium afterwards for the football game. DJ, food and beverages, contests, inflatable games. We've worked with Boys and Girls Club to present that pretty much every year since we've started it, so it's been an exciting partnership. And again, residents are encouraged to come out. And the football game's right afterwards, Falcons versus the Sholo Cougars. So I did see in the paper that Fountain Hills football team's expected to do very well this year, so hopefully they'll have a good homecoming game. One last thing, the events help to achieve a couple of goals, part of the strategic plan, the strategic priority to strengthen our small-town identity. I think everybody could agree that these definitely help do that, and along with the council's goal this year, which is to maintain and promote small-town character by enhancing public-private collaborations for new and improve existing special events. So we've got a lot of existing special events that we're tweaking and trying to improve and make those better as we go each year. So with that, I'll take any questions you have on any of the five events.
Thank you, Brian. Any public comment on any of those three items?
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much, Brian. Any questions for staff on this? We do one motion, Andrew, on all these three?
Yes.
All right. We get a motion to approve the consideration of special events?
Move.
All right.
Let's do it.
I guess--
Exactly.
Are you getting any discussion? Mr. Colley.
You know, Lou, we can find the keg at K.
Yeah. I'll help you with that one. I'll call you right after, Mr. Kloster. All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post.
Mayor, 7-0.
Excellent. Thanks, Brian. Thanks to Mr. Colley, Southwest German Society, and Natalie Varell and the businesses for doing the movies, and Homecoming Parade, the Fountain Hills Athletic Booster Club, and tailgating with the help of the Boys and Girls Club. So great partnering to get more done for our community.
A lot of stuff going on. Parks and Rec for-- Hope to see you guys all out.
Coordinating and all. Good job.
We will.
Look forward, we'll see you all there. Next item is item 14, Considerational Resolution 2009-25, an intergovernmental agreement with Valley Metro Regional Public Transportation Authority to provide special transportation services to the Town of Fountain Hills not to exceed $70,500 for the period from July 1, 2009 to June 30, 2010. Welcome, Joan.
Thank you, Mayor. As council may recall, earlier this year, Maricopa County notified us that they were going to discontinue their special transportation services for Fountain Hills residents effective June 30th of '09. And at that time, the council directed staff to research our alternatives and see what we could find other programs with a goal in mind to provide uninterrupted service to the residents that were currently using the SDS program. So with that in mind, we did some research and found out that the Regional Public Transportation Authority was going to make available a program that was very much similar to the SDS program and call it Total Transit. However, because we received kind of late notice of the termination from Maricopa County's program, we weren't able to get an IGA written and approved prior to the July 1st date. So therefore, we've been operating under memo of understanding since that date with Valley Metro. Valley Metro. Excuse me. However, the IGA has now been completed, and I know you just received it in your mailboxes this morning, and we got it from Andrew's office this morning, so hopefully you've had time to review that. If approved this evening, the IGA will continue through June 30th of 2010 and cannot exceed a cost of $70,500 for the fiscal year. That figure includes the 5% administrative fee that, that our PTA would charge. Valley Metro's board meeting is, is going to be held on September 17th, and if the IGA is approved by the council this evening, they will discuss it at their September 17th meeting and approve it on their end. I'm happy to report that we continue to have the same number of riders with the Total Transit program as we had under the Maricopa County program, and Heather Ware has worked diligently to, with Valley Metro, to work out all the glitches that we started with, as you know, that she'd emailed you early on with the program, but those have all been resolved, and she's been getting a lot of compliments from both the riders and their families about how helpful and friendly the drivers are and how helpful the dispatch service is, and they thank the council a lot for providing this program for them. They recognize that the town manager and the council have made these transportation services possible, and they wanted to express their appreciation for that. Those residents that do not have special needs transportation programs are being helped through the Give a Lift program that Heather is running, and that has turned out to be very successful so far. She currently has 23 volunteer drivers that are giving lifts to 40-plus riders, and this has all occurred since July 1st. There have been 41 rides provided in the last six weeks alone, and drivers and riders are becoming, forming fast friendships, which was kind of our goal, so they go to lunch together, and now the volunteer can, or the rider that needs a ride can just call the volunteer and know that they can depend on them to come and take them to a medical appointment or go get groceries or whatever the case may be. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about the IGA.
Good. Thank you very much. Any questions for Joan? Councilmember Legay?
Joan, when, when you first proposed this program to us, we had a limited amount of folks that were enrolled, and looking at the contract, it's for a certain amount of folks. Thoughts about any flexibility in adding, adding folks or not? Are we fixed at that, at the 10?
Well, in this budget year, I think we're fixed with the 10. Now, if one of them would drop out, then we could add a new rider, as long as it was in the budget, but, you know, the IGA says we don't, we can't go over the $70,500, so if we added any more in addition to the 10, we'd be over budget.
Kind of substituting out if someone dropped out and someone else had needs in that regard.
We would substitute, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. Joan, it might be for you or maybe for Julie, but the $14,000 rebate, for lack of a better word, that we got last, that we would be getting, now I'm getting mixed up on which fiscal year it is, but it was a total of $21,000 possible. Are we able to use that towards this, or, I'm not really remembering what we did with that when we, when you discovered it?
I think you were talking about the LTAF funds, possibly?
No, it was, it was a, it was a reimbursement, and it was $14,000 for '08, '09, and then possibly another seven for '09, '10, and I wondered if, because thinking of $21,000 going towards this would be, you know, pretty good, too.
Mayor Shlom, councilperson Dickey, that's through the RPTA, the Regional Public Transportation Agency, and it's a reimbursement, and I believe it was $7,000 per year. So we're, we're able to go back and retroactively apply for fiscal year '07, '08, and then '08, '09, and then '09, '10 for $7,000, so each year, but yes, we can, that's exactly what we can use it for, to help subsidize this program.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right. Someone? Yes.
If you make a motion.
Councilmember Dickey, go for it.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve Resolution 2009-25, an intergovernmental agreement with Valley Metro Regional Public Transportation Authority to provide special transportation services to the Town of Fountain Hills not to exceed $70,500 from July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Joan. And we have received some nice comments, and that's, that's always appreciated, so thank you very much. Item 15, Consideration Resolution 2009-31, approving an intergovernmental agreement with, among Arizona municipalities and the League of Arizona Cities and Towns to establish a database for sharing the results of eVerify audits. Andrew, you're going to talk to us about eVerify sharing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you know, a while back, the legislature imposed a new provision relating to verifying the legal status of workers through the eVerify program for anybody who provides services to a community in the state. Applies to the state, it applies to virtually every city in town. In complying with that provision, it occurred to us that a number of cities and towns were going to be duplicating the people they would be auditing, and in an effort to try and not have the same company audited by seven different cities in the course of a year or whatever period of time we were using, I circulated the idea around the City Attorney's Association that we, we use a common database so that everybody knows who's been audited, so when you apply your, your random audit procedure and you come up with a company's name, that you could check the database to make sure that company hadn't been audited already that year. If they had, you could then go to the source city that conducted the audit and view their audit materials and find out what they've done, so that we're not harassing a business over and over and over again in a year. Some of the engineering and construction firms in the city will do work for, you know, 50 cities in the state, and they could get hit many, many times, so in order to try and make that workable for the people we do business with and have them not, not want to do business with us anymore, we came up with the concept of the league serving as a clearinghouse for this. This IGA is an agreement where the league will hold the results of the audit only. It's just going to be a memorandum indicating what we've audited, what records we've audited, what company, what the findings were, and the league will hold that document. That will be all that's in the database, so no personal information or anything else that's, that's held by the city or town that's conducting the audit or that's held by the employer will ever be available at the league. We didn't feel like it was a good idea to be moving that much personal information around with that many opportunities for someone to make a mistake. So, beginning as, you know, as soon as cities and towns in the state adopt it, it's an opt-in program, so whoever, whoever wants to participate is allowed to participate and use the database that the league will be maintaining for us, and we're going to start it up here shortly and give it a try and see how it works. We think it has the potential to be a useful tool because of the different audit strategies by different cities and towns, everybody, there's no guidance in the statute, so everybody has chosen what they think is an acceptable random audit procedure. You know, for a city like Phoenix, if they did one out of every 10 contracts, they'd be auditing all year long constantly. So we, we have a number of different styles to blend that. We've just used the results of audit method, and we're hopeful it'll work. We'll let you know how it progresses.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions for staff on this item? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Andrew, is it legal to share information back forth across cities and towns with the eVerify? And I'm thinking of it more like in my business, you know, if somebody comes to me and said, "Yeah, I want to see your eVerify files," I'd say, "Where's your warrant?" You know, I'm not sharing anything, I'm going to say, "Show me something," so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the material that the cities and towns will be holding as a result of the eVerify audits will be public records to the extent that it can be.
Oh.
Because we've conducted an audit, everything we hold other than personally identifying information or other things that were required by law not to the fiscal, this will be a public record. So to the extent that that information is available and out there, it would allow that other municipality to look at all the, all the information they would need to.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
But the information that'd be shared with the other cities, because the league would say, "Well, this town or city has verified that company." They'll contact, say, us if we were the company that verified employees of that firm.
Right.
And then what would we be sharing with them? Just that certain employees were covered if they asked us of those employees?
It depends upon the level of comfort of the municipality. Some municipalities have indicated that if another municipality has done an audit within the year and they are able to see the results of the audit, that they'll be, that'll be satisfactory for them. Others have said they'll want to see the background papers, and others yet have said they'll want to see the entire audit, meaning all social security numbers and everything else, to be able to run those same numbers themselves. In the event that cities and towns want to go to that third level and actually see the personally identifying information that the other is holding, they'll just have to work out an agreement between themselves that that information will not be released. Both of them are under the same obligation under law to not give that information out, so there's, there's no incentive or motivation for anybody to, to cause any disruption of that. It's just, we didn't feel comfortable having any one of us be the guarantor of another, so it's going to have to be between the communities that are working on a particular audit of the same company.
That was my question, was around, you know, us assuring that we did our eVerify work in accordance with whatever standard there is, and then, in essence, we're assuring the work that we did on behalf of what they're now required to do.
And, and really, that was the reason why we left it as open as we did, is it's up to, you know, for instance, Scottsdale, if they pull the name of a company, then they check the database, and we've done that audit, they have then the opportunity to decide, "Well, that's all well and good, but we want to do it ourselves." They have the opportunity to look at the materials and determine that that audit was done properly, and they, they'll accept that as one of theirs. This process is so new and very fluid that we're attempting to try and find a way to meet the purpose and intent of the statute without being overly burdensome on businesses, because quite frankly, we, we don't want to chase anybody away right now.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So, thank you, Mayor. So, Andrew, if we were to piggyback on a particular contract that another city would have, say, for pavement or something like that, we'd be able to just go to that city and say, "Did you do an audit of this company, and how did the eVerify come out? Be satisfied with the results," and then use that company without having to do our own audit?
Well, if, if the other municipality had done an audit of that company and it was lodged with the league and we were comfortable with it, that it was current enough and with the process it was used, but I wouldn't recommend that we just blindly say, "They've audited, so we're okay." I think it at least requires us to go and view their, their full audit and decide for ourselves whether or not that meets the standards that we're going to be applying.
I guess I meant to our satisfaction, we wouldn't, we couldn't, we wouldn't have to go do our own audit.
Exactly. The idea is, if a company was audited last month and they come up on our list again, that we shouldn't put them through an audit again within that period of time, and we struggle with how long these audits would be good for. I believe that, you know, one year is, is the shortest period of time people have been talking about, or as much as three years. We ask the league to just maintain the database for three years to, to have them there depending upon the comfort level in different cities and towns.
Thank you. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
Mayor. All right. I'm sorry, Councilmember Hans?
Just real quick, have we established our procedure? How we're going to do the audit?
Mayor, Councilmember Hans, and we are working with Al Haller, our sales tax auditor, to be the eVerify auditor as well. I believe that, and we, we sent comments and questions back over to him on a couple of details of his proposal, but it's convenient for us that we have someone that we know and trust that can actually handle this additional task. I know Julie's been working with him, and I'm not sure that, if there are any other questions, she might have an answer for you.
I'm assuming that eVerify was a standard form for, standard that you needed to follow since it's a mandated, you know, legislative action that was passed down to us. Is it, is it not straightforward, what we need to check on?
Mr. Mayor, I wish I could tell you that the statute was crystal clear on exactly the process we're supposed to employ to do it, only that we're supposed to do it. We're supposed to ensure the companies are complying with eVerify, anyone who provides us services.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? All right, I look for a motion to approve Resolution 2009-31.
So move.
And how about a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. Thanks, Andrew. Next item, Consideration Ordinance '09-09, amending the Fountain Hills Town Code relating to adjustments to development fees for the Town of Fountain Hills. Welcome back, Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the council is aware, probably a little over two years ago, staff was directed to go back and reevaluate our development fees, which means have a full-blown study of our capital improvement projects, and then come back to the council with a proposal for either an increase or a decrease in development fees. The council was presented with the Capital Improvement Plan, or what we call the IIP, the Infrastructure Improvement Plan, in September of 2008. In April, we published a notice of intent and had, held a public hearing on the proposed fees. That published, notice of intent was published, excuse me, in the local newspaper two times in May. On the report, the development fee report recommendation from Red Oak Consulting was presented to the council on May 7th. There was another public hearing held on July 2nd. Tonight would be the proposed adoption of those fees for the council to consider, and if those fees were approved, the effective date would be about the middle of November. The proposed fees, this is the schedule of the proposed fees for residential and with, by each category, with the change. And you can see from the chart that the total increase in residential, single-family, is $49,87, and that's primarily due to the streets fee. And again, those increases are due and related to the Capital Improvement Plan and are due to the updated Capital Improvement Plan for streets, which was a result of the StanTech study. And the multifamily, again, that increase is $3,877, and primarily due to streets. The increase for non-residential is a total of $6.16, and for industrial, it's $1.14. This is a survey of non-utility development fees with other cities and towns, and you can see that currently Fountain Hills is the bottom arrow, is where we currently are, and if the fees were adopted as proposed, we would be second to Queen Creek. An estimate of what that impact of those increases in development fees, what it would mean in additional revenue to the town for the next five years, based on the current fees, which is the first row, you can see what those current revenues would be. Again, this is based on a projection of development over the next five years, and if you look at 2012 and 2013 and 2014, that assumes that the Elman property will, will start taking permits and be developed. So the difference between what the current fees are and what the proposed fees are is, in 2012, $679,000, and in 2013, it's about 1.2. So the difference between, in five years, at the current fees, would be $4.3 million, but if the proposed fees were adopted, it would be $7.7 million. So the difference in five years in revenue is about $3.4 million. Taking that difference out, 25 years, it's about $10 or $11 million. And again, this is based on the assumption that there's going to be development, particularly in the, in the Elman property. This is just a summary of the capital improvement projects that are included in the Infrastructure Improvement Plan, and these are just the growth-related portion of projects. So for example, in streets, it's $26.7 million. Well, the total of the projects for streets is $98 million, but only the growth portion is the only amount that's used in calculating the development fees. So the total projects that are related to growth is $60 million over 25 years. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Does that mean we're underwater?
No. Sorry.
It doesn't mean the numbers are fishy.
There you go. Very good.
Picked a bad picture, I can tell.
Thank you very much. No, no. All right. Questions for Ms. Giddy? Councilmember Legay?
Thank you, Mayor. Julie, on the chart, you had current fees versus proposed fees, with that delta of $3.4 million over five and $10, $11 million over 25 years. Those calculations and those, that delta is based primarily on residential. That doesn't include commercial, does it?
Mayor Shlom, Councilmember Legay, it includes residential and commercial, and again, it's, it's an estimate, because it's hard to, since commercial's square footage, we just, you know, took an estimate of projected growth.
Okay, so this is inclusive of both residential and non-residential?
Multifamily, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And this is an important topic for us to discuss tonight, and hopefully we'll have some good dialogue here tonight. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Julie, on the same chart, the bottom, you said 25-year difference would be 10 to 11 million. What is the projected total? Is the projected total trying to come up with the $60 million per impact?
Mayor Shlom, Councilmember Shlom, I'm not sure I understand the question. The $10 to $11 million is the total over 25 years approximately. That would be the difference. If we had the current fees that we have now, and there was no increase for 20 to 25 years, that difference, based on the proposed fees, would be about $11 million.
So I guess my question is, are we trying to reach the $60 million with all the fees? If you were to collect all the fees, and currently, if you were to take, if you did nothing, and we use the current fees, we'd be collecting $10 to $11 million less. My question is, how much would we be collecting over that 25 years? Are we projecting out that we're trying to collect that $60 million, that we're saying we're going to be short that the impact is going to have from growth, that that $60 million is impacted from growth, and so we're trying to collect that $60 million over 25 years?
The proposed fees are designed to pay for all of those growth-related projects over 25 years. There is other factors that come into it that are calculated. For example, some of the projects that are used to calculate it, and I don't want to get it too confusing because it is very technical, some of it includes property taxes paying for existing projects now. So those numbers are reduced, reduce the amount of money that can be used to calculate development fees.
Okay, so the current property taxes are going to reduce that $60 million to some extent, and then what's left is what you calculate, what you say you're trying to collect. So essentially, what you're telling us, if by not raising the fees, we're going to be short by our projected revenues of $10 to $11 million. We're probably already behind the eight ball already.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nikki?
To that point, I wanted to, I appreciate that, Julie. The, if you look at the five-year total current meaning that would be collected, so, you know, you would say, okay, just multiply by five, but not really, because I don't think that the actual development fees will be collected, because we're kind of going to get built out. So the best-case scenario would be probably to take that, and, you know, so say, 25 million or something like that. And then if we do have these new fees, then they'd be more like seven, you know, seven times five or whatever. So it's still not $60 million, but that gets us closer. Because I still don't think you can really multiply it by five, because I don't, I think they'll drift off towards the, you know, as we get closer to the 20 years and that kind of thing.
Right. And Mayor, if I could, you know, the $60 million, the total cost of those projects is based on doing all of those projects in 25 years, whereas the revenue is based on projected construction and development over 25 years. And obviously, we're not going to develop everything in 25 years. So when I prepared the revenue projection, you know, at the request of the council, I just used based on what we think development's going to be. When they create the impact fees, they base that the $60 million is going to be done in 25 years. But obviously, it's all related to growth. If there's no growth, no building going on, there are no development fees.
I can't recall exactly, but for example, wasn't next year's capital improvement budget originally around $10 million before we started to look at it again? And obviously, that's something we're not going to be spending. Those are adjusted as we go.
That's correct, Mayor.
So the, on the survey of nonutility development fee communities, which is helpful, looking at communities that don't perhaps maintain their sewer or have a district, and also perhaps the water. Currently, we're a little below half as high as those, and then with this proposed change, we'd be second highest, short of Cave Creek or Queen Creek.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the big change comes from an adjustment in how the streets are calculated in the capital improvement plan, or was it just an increase in the expected needs for streets in the capital improvement plan?
Mayor Shlom, the increase is actually due to the updated STAN-TEC study that did an evaluation of all of the streets in town, and what their current condition is, and what is necessary to bring those streets to over the 70%.
And I would assume that the funding for those would come through a capital improvement plan, or impact fees, rather than a potentially a bond or other means?
Mayor Shlom, the impact fees wouldn't pay for all of it, because the impact fees can only pay for the piece that would be related to the growth. So they would have to be subsidized with either a bond or capital improvement money, and if there was enough in the capital improvement fund. Obviously, some piece could come out of the Highway User Fund, but it would have to subsidize. The development fees could not do them all.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Julie, so in the, was it the STAN-TEC report?
Correct.
I didn't know if I had the name right or not. The money that they used was obviously going to have to be subsidized by either a bond issue that the citizens that are currently here would have to pay for, and also just, and so logically and methodically, they went through and they said, "This much of it would be related to impact of growth. And if we didn't have that growth, we wouldn't have to have that expenditure." Is that correct?
Sort of correct. The STAN-TEC report took a look at all of our streets and came up with a number. What the development fee study does is they look at what our capital improvement budget is, which of course includes improving our streets, you know, according to the standards that the STAN-TEC report said. So in other words, the development fee report is based on our CIP, what we create. The STAN-TEC report just tells us that we need to make sure that we have this much money in our capital improvement budget to bring our streets up.
How many cities and towns are looking at reviewing their development fees? Do we know of the ones that we have listed in front of us here?
I do have that information, if I can just find it here real quick. Currently, Queen Creek, Queen Creek does theirs annually. Mesa is underway, and Carefree is updating theirs for 2010. The town of Gilbert, they just did theirs in 2008. Avondale did theirs in 2009.
Okay. So to go back to the streets, because streets seem to be the largest number, I think, for the most part, the town's done an admirable job of maintaining the streets that we have. I mean, when you look at most of our streets, probably better than half of them are close to 20-plus years, 25-years-old. And I think, I can seem to remember having conversations with Tom Ward, that the average life of a street is about, well, you're lucky if you get 30 years out of it. And we've been very fortunate in that we've been able to maintain 30 years. But we're getting on the cusp, and this is what we've been telling the public for quite a while, we're getting on the cusp of having to redo all our streets, and especially the ones that are 30-plus years old. And if you take the back end over where Four Peak School is, those are probably the oldest streets next to Swarro Boulevard. Swarro Boulevard was first and put in, then it went down Grandi, and then you went into all those streets back in there. And I think that when you start thinking about development, like the Elman development, and the impact it's going to have on, say, El Cebrote, which is a minor collector, I believe is what it's rated at, and some of the other streets that we have, it's going to take a group effort. I think it's going to be an effort of some development fees, because I believe that impact, you know, that people moving in here have an impact on the infrastructure, and that needs to be paid for. But it's also going to take a group effort of the citizens of this town wanting to pay for bond issues. They're going to have to repair some of those streets, because you can have all the development fees you want, but if you have streets that are not maintained, you're not going to have anybody wanting to move to this town. Any of your infrastructure starts going down, it's going to have to use impact on the citizenry, and of course, like everybody likes to use, our property values in this town. So that's, streets seem to be the big topic tonight, and it's just, it's a hard subject to tackle. When I, when you've been here as long as I have, and you've seen all the things that have happened, we've been rushing to catch up, and I think we've done an admirable job of it. But I don't want to see unfair burden on one particular segment. I think we need to share in a global setting. Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, the streets are primarily the one item that jumped up most considerably. That's what's causing what would be nearly a doubling of the development fees in residential and commercial. On the commercial side, how do we, I know when Red Oak comes in, they just look at the capital improvement plan, they do their division, and divide it against everything else, so that growth pays for itself, at least in the impacts on the front end. How about, what I'm challenged with is in the nonresidential, particularly in the areas that might be considered downtown development and such, where we really are obviously behind wanting to get our downtown off the ground, and through our visioning and that sort of thing. How have, or is there staff suggestion, how do you measure, weigh the desire for us to have development downtown, and sooner than later, and increasing development fees for that space?
Mayor Shlom, as far as the commercial, and I'm going to go a little bit on a limb here, because it's a very complex calculation, they actually use a standard, an industry standard, and measure things like trip, trip charges. It's not a population-based, or it's not a unit-based. It's actually based on the traffic and public safety, and, you know, that's probably as close as I can get. But it's based on trips, it's based on potential trips caused by growth, and if the commercial building is a certain size, what type of business it would be, and how many trips it would generate. Because obviously, residential, you don't have as many trips. If you have a business, you have more people traveling the streets. So that's how they base their estimate for the commercial on streets.
Do you know how we're doing comparatively in the commercial space, or the nonresidential space, as far as compared to other communities around us by chance?
On the fee for commercial?
Yeah, on the fees.
No, sorry.
Okay. What you should have asked earlier, but good questions. This is, again, obviously important item for our future. Councilmember Hanson, did you have your hand up earlier?
On July 2, I believe, is when we met, we had quite a bit of discussion about Swarro, because that was also the night that we were discussing the possible bond. And there seemed to be a little confusion between growth and maintenance. And I thought we were going to get, have a little bit more information on that, or clarification on that, because I know it was, on the one hand, considered as part of the IIP, and to go into the calculation for the development fees. But then, we were also told, well, it would be considered maintenance. So then it couldn't be considered part of that. And I just wondered if, and I wonder if there's any of our, the other streets that would be more maintenance-related than growth-related.
Mayor Shlom, Councilwoman Hanson, the Swarro Boulevard specifically, when the question came up, the consultant obviously didn't know specifically what the street was, but the Swarro Boulevard, the Millen overlay, is 0% allocated to growth. So it's included in the IIP or the capital improvement plan. Those projects are included, but it's not used in the calculation of the development fee. It's excluded because it's not growth, it is maintenance. Does that answer the question?
For that road.
For that road, yes.
For that one road.
Yes.
Let me, I failed to ask for call to the public, so I was going to see if we could interrupt this, and I thought we might have a speaker.
Yes, Mayor, we have one card.
Thought we might have a speaker here.
Ed Key?
Mr. Key?
Two cards.
All right. Ed, do you have two cards? Just kidding. Just kidding. Welcome, Mr. Key.
Thank you, Mayor Shlom, and members of the council. Red Oak Consulting has recommended upward adjustments in our current development fee schedule based on projected costs to the town attributable to new development. Eighty-five percent of that amount is directed towards the maintenance of town roads, which are already in poor shape. If you approve these adjustments, the minimum additional amount over current fees that developers will pay the town over time to offset the cost of growth is $10 million. That's $10 million. That figure is based on a $5,000 adjustment for 1,800 approved residential units in Elman, Eagles Nest, and Adaro, plus remaining infill lots, yielding $9 million, plus a conservative estimate of $1 million from commercial and industrial activity. Should you reject, growth will still happen, infrastructure will still have to be funded, but the $10 million will come from the collective pockets of existing residents, dollar for dollar, not from the developers, for whom development fees are a pass-through option. Let's look at the opposition's case briefly. One, the proposals are too high, almost double the existing fees. The 2004, 2006 council chose to ignore recommendations of experts at that date, and arbitrarily set the fees too low. I think you can see that from that chart that was up there in blue. As a result, we are in a makeup mode at the present time, and will be further behind if we repeat the same error tonight. With few exceptions, every other municipality imposes such fees. The adjustment places us more in line with where we ought to be. Secondly, this is the wrong time to raise fees. It gives a wrong message to our business community. Development fees are not a general tax. There is no evidence that development fees have a negative impact upon economic development. As a matter of fact, in today's News and Republic, there was an article stating that home builders have sold off much of their excess inventory, and 10,000 homes have been sold each month in Maricopa County for the past three months. Three, since the legislature has attached a moratorium on development fees in its proposed budget, maybe we should wait. Our process with development fees has gone on for over a year, as you could see. The state budget is still up in the air. If the government does not veto, and a moratorium becomes a reality, passing this proposal tonight will enable us to hit the ground running when the moratorium ends. Finally, approving this adjustment tonight is not a draconian measure. Rather, it is thoughtful planning for a stronger fiscal future. $10 million, that's $10 million. Growth pays, or current residents pay. I ask you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Key.
Mark Dorman?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mark Dorman, Dorman Architects, 16716 East Parkview, here in Fountain Hills. I've been here in Fountain Hills for 14 years this summer, and have done business here as an architect since being here. And I'm very concerned about what these increases in the commercial fees will do to what I call the big one. Not the earthquakes in California, not the hurricane off the east coast, but the downtown development, because that's what I hear called all the time. Development fees like this are entirely appropriate for big suburbs, where there's a lot of through traffic, and where you have a large population base. But Fountain Hills is a small suburb with very limited through traffic, and we simply don't attract the kind of national developers who are willing to pay these kinds of fees. So I would just like to say, I think, over the past month, I've talked with a number of builders, realtors, owners, and other architects, and basically, everybody wants to know, what do you think this will accomplish? Is it really going to encourage people to build here? I think we need to make our downtown area as competitive as possible economically to encourage people to build out the new vision that we've hired this new consultant, Swabak, to design for us. And I think increasing this development fee will bring development to a dead halt in Fountain Hills. I speak that knowing the business, knowing the owners and developers that I work with here in downtown Fountain Hills, and I know they can't afford to pay these kind of fees. So I would encourage you to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. All right. More questions for staff? Councilmember Leger?
Julie, on that chart there, where we were comparing to other municipalities, survey of nonutility development fees, I know that Scottsdale is not on there, probably for very good reason. You probably matched these against You probably matched these against smaller towns and population. Do we have any idea what, if Scottsdale was on this chart, where they would land?
Mayor Schlum, Councilwoman Leger, no, I really don't. I went on to Scottsdale's website today to try to find their fee schedule, and I could not find it. You know, they may vary because of different criteria, but this study, this comparison was actually done by the consultant, not by staff, and so this is all that they had as of June.
The reason I ask that question is when we look at our positioning moving up to second, and who knows, we could move down again when those other municipalities adjust their fees, which is not reflected on here. I mention Scottsdale because I think in competing, particularly in establishing a vision for downtown, I think the types of development we're looking at for downtown is more amicable to what you would typically see in the Scottsdale area, given our close proximity. So I've never seen impact fees discourage people from developing in Scottsdale, frankly. As a matter of fact, Arizona for the last several years has been one of the largest growing states, residentially and commercially, regardless of the level of our impact fees. The notion of the amount of the fee I find is quite interesting. I also have found no data in researching this that there's a direct correlation. Developers typically include that cost and pass it on to the consumer anyways, and at the end of the day, they net out a profit that they expect before they make the original investment. And just an observation, and this is not scientific by any means, I believe in following this debate over many, many years in this town, that every time our consultants come to the table and says, this is what you need to do to be on track, to cover your capital needs, you know, we hear the expression, growth pays for growth. I don't expect developers to pay for growth. I expect developers to pay for a fair share of their growth because their development has an impact on our infrastructure. If you look historically at the last time this dialogue occurred, the fees were recommended relatively, you know, higher than they were set, and they were arbitrarily set a lot lower. Now, one would think that with arbitrarily low impact fees, look at what our positioning was, way down there on the scale, as indicated by that, and probably significantly lower than Scottsdale. We have not had a boom of industrial or commercial development in this town, even when our impact fees were low. So I just, you know, it's not scientific, but just living in this town and making those observations. And we had a citizen come before us this evening and made it perfectly clear that if we do not go with this particular recommendation, for every penny we tweak this, for every dollar we tweak this, we are then disproportionately creating a burden for our citizens, whether it's a tax burden or not. Now, we all know philosophically that primary property tax doesn't fly very well in this town. So then you're looking at what other types of burdens are going to be administered in that regard. And, you know, sales tax has a certain ceiling. So the bottom line here is that these fees, I think, are long overdue in terms of an adjustment. When I look at these percentage increases, it catches my attention, and it's caught a lot of people's attention in the community, including architects and builders. But we're in a catch-up mode. We're behind the eight ball. Now, it's my understanding that the legislature is looking at a two-year moratorium, which even puts us further behind the eight ball. And if you were to look at your chart that you had here, you could actually figure out, if you put a moratorium on our current impact fees or our proposed impact fees, we're taking an even larger hit. So I think that historically, we're even further behind than your numbers indicate. So those are just some comments, and I may make comment later. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Dickie?
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate the difference of opinion on this matter, but really, I got one pro letter and one opposed letter. So it hasn't, you know, it hasn't been overwhelmingly, obviously, one way or the other. There was an article in the Arizona Republic, it was about the budget, but it was talking about development fees. And I think you can use this in a way to explain, I can use this as a way to explain why I would actually be in favor of enacting this at this time. They were talking about the moratorium, but basically said cities, it was telling lawmakers, cities collect impact fees according to complex formulas, as we've been discussing, that quantify how much it will cost to build the streets, police, fire station, and other critical infrastructure. This is their opinion, and I agree with it, that's why I'm saying it. They say lose the fees and the entire community pays. That's just bad policy. Across the valley, badly needed fire stations, road projects will be put on hold in most cities, increasing response times, exacerbating gridlock, making our communities less desirable for potential investors and knowledge workers. Some insist that suspending impact fees, or in our case, not raising them, keeping them low, would jump-start construction. That's a weak argument. Maybe lower fees would lure some skittish builders into the market, but it's doubtful. Part of that argument also reminds me of some of the things that do happen on a larger scale in the state when we talk about taxes and things like that. And one of the things that has been spoken about a lot, especially by GPEC now, is that, you know, sure, there's a certain amount of attraction for having low taxes or low fees, but we're starting to see that, you know, other things are valued, good education, obviously. What happened to your parents when they need help? What's the transportation? Is the air clean? Are your roads working? So I think there are other things that go into play when people decide whether they're going to invest in the community, and I think our community has a lot of value to it. One of the things we talked about, which was that people rejected the property tax, and that's very true. We didn't give them the opportunity on whether they would, current residents wanted to vote on the road to fix Swarro. I have an inkling, maybe a faith, that they would have wanted to go ahead and do that. But the idea of current residents paying their fair share over the years, I believe we have, because in the old days, we had the road district, so we were paying for road maintenance at that time and for growth until we had some development fees in, I guess, 2000 or something. So for 10 years, we've paid for that. We paid, we had the fire district, so we did have a property tax, and we were paying for that. We paid bonds for, we paid for the mountains, we paid for the area around the fountain and for the downtown, that sales tax. So there are things.
Oh, I'm just thinking the community center, town hall.
Right. So there are things that current residents have paid for, and at this point, and I think what Mr. Key was saying, I really agree with that. I think that, I was there at that meeting when those were set in '05, and, you know, we keep, we pay for these people or we commission these people to come and give us studies. And we direct staff to do them or we pay for them, but then we seem to consistently question the validity of the results or the qualifications of the people giving them to us. We had a street report, this Fantaq report, but, you know, kind of given us, we don't like what we had here, and we didn't really take action on it, so now we're not going to follow their advice. We had wonderful volunteers telling us how to address our revenue shortfall, and they gave us several options, and, you know, people voted against it, so we didn't do that. The previous development fee discussion at that meeting, it was just like what we saw. We pay for this, we expect them to be using accepted methods, which we asked for straight out. Is this something the other cities use? Yes, it is. This is, this is the methodology that is accepted. But at that meeting, they just cut what she said or he said, I don't remember who made the presentation, with no expertise, with no background, and just said, yeah, well, but we're going to make it this. And so as Mr. Key said, we're behind when we got the presentation for needs for fire stations and response times. We don't like what we hear, so we don't listen to it. So either we stop wasting energy and resources and asking people for their expertise that we're going to reject the results of just because we didn't like that. Now, that doesn't mean we blindly accept everything that comes down the pike, but we've been talking about this issue for years. We've had a lot of public input, I mean, we've had a lot of opportunity for public input. We haven't had a lot of people really up in arms one way or the other about it. And at this point, I just think that we have value to this Fountain Hills for people to want to come here, for people to want to be residential, and I think after seeing what's going on with that visioning, there's going to be attraction there. So I'm all for doing this now and to protect our current residents from bearing more than their fair share of the brunt of the growth that we are hoping is going to come.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickie. Is there more comments? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, mayor. I have, of course, a little different viewpoint. The, Julie's report clearly shows that construction is borderlining nonexistent now, and depending on which report you read, it's not going to get much better than that in the next five years, maybe longer. Nobody knows what we're going to be fighting with. And then you listen to Councilmember Dickie's comments about how the state budget is possibly going to stop funding some of the monies that we are currently receiving. And of course, that could go on for another 10 or 15 years. Nobody knows how long that's going on. So to that, I say Fountain Hills is going to have to one day stand up and start taking some of the responsibility themselves, because the state could stop all of their funding, and we don't have a stopgap to continue our modus operandi, and we don't. And certainly, the development fees are not going to even participate during this recession. I mean, it's a joke if we think that the development fees, when we sell two permits a month, will even come into play. So with that being said, I truly don't think we've got all the information on the table that we need to come up with the right decision, the correct decision. But before I go on any further with that, I'd like to explain to the people that don't understand the way the developments work, a developer buys the ground and he develops it, puts a sewer in, and then gives that to the sanitation district, puts the water in, gives that to Chaparral City Water, so they have income coming in. Chaparral picks up so much per water meter, and it's just a constant money pocket for those utility company. And then the developer puts the streets in, and then they amortize all of that into the price of the lot, and the person that's buying that lot gets to pay for their share of the sewer, their share of the water, and the street. And every one of the streets that have been put in in Fountain Hills, to my knowledge, in about the last eight years, are private streets. And Fountain Hills doesn't pay one cent of maintenance on it, they have homeowners associations that collect dues to pay it. So, I mean, it gets much more convoluted in my mind trying to ask a homeowner that has already paid for his sewer, water, streets, to throw out another $11,000 or $12,000 for the privilege of living here, when the town of Fountain Hills isn't trying to help itself. And if the town of Fountain Hills was trying to help itself a little bit, I would be all over putting the icing on the cake with the amount of monies that are being requested by Red Oak, who has very little human factor in it. They plug the numbers in the computers, and here's what they say. So I think we've missed the human factor. I think we need to take a lot deeper look at the economy before we step up and subject the builders and the developers of this town. And I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I'm saying we should have some, just a little more information before I would be comfortable voting to approve this. And with that being said, my motion would be to continue this to the first meeting in September, which will give us 30 days to assemble some more information.
We would have our first meeting, our typical second meeting, would be about a month from now. I'll second that motion. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. I believe it's very, obviously very important. We do not have a tremendous amount of development going on that's burdening us to make a decision that's, wouldn't be fast anyways, because we have talked a lot about this. But more information would be good, and I, and as I think it's most typical in other communities, they don't typically work with what just Red Oak or whatever consulting firm puts the number towards or suggests that they adopt. So we have a motion to continue this till the first meeting in September. Andrew, is it time to have discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor, discussion is limited to the continuance only, not to the actual main matter.
Thank you. Vice mayor.
Andrew, can we expand the discussion to information we want staff to come back to us with for that motion to continue?
It's just to the merits of whether or not it should be continued.
I think we could have the council members talk to staff about information they would like.
Yeah, I think I can support the motion to continue, only on the basis that we gather the information. There's been some, a little bit of a quagmire of information, you know, is it $98 million? Is it $60 million? What happens with, you know, council, oh, what can I do, remember your name? Cassie, Councilwoman Hanson, I'm sorry, Cassie. I didn't want to call you Jenny. You know, brought up the question about maintenance as opposed to impact on the streets. Councilmember Brown brings up private streets, although I don't think private streets are figured in, and they rightfully shouldn't be. We don't do any maintenance on private streets, but it's just the impact. And I'd like to see the impact of growth on the streets. Obviously, they leave their subdivisions, so they go somewhere, they've got to have some impact on the streets. I'd like to see, the information are in those reports somewhere, and maybe if we just bring it out to the public session.
I think this is a good dialogue. I think each council member will have questions, and then staff typically, as they respond, will reply to everybody with answers to questions that come up in this dialogue, this dialogue spread on more questions. Any other comments on the motion? Yes, Councilmember Dickie?
Mayor, thanks. I prefer not to continue this, but one of the things I want to mention is that the budget bill that's on the governor's desk now, the moratorium, I think the date is June 30th, '09. So basically, we would have been, if we had been able to do this in April or May or whatever, we would have been kind of not under that. So since this budget's not finished, and there's still give and take going on, and I have no idea what it will be maybe, but if a date starts being changed in there and it ends up being September 1st, you know, anybody that adopted it before September 1st is okay, you know, I just, I would really, I wish that we would just address this now. Let me put it that way.
Okay. Any other comments on the continuance? Mayor? Councilmember Leger?
I'm always game for more information and more analysis. We started this debate a long time ago, and I don't think it's the first time we've had this debate. We seem to have this debate every time we have this discussion on impact fees. I think that there are some philosophical differences. I don't think we're going to have the answers to all the questions we want that were posed. I think that as the legislative bill reads currently, it's the June 30th date, as you mentioned, Councilwoman Dickie. And if, in fact, we go forward and approve the rates or reduce rates, we can't enact these for two years. I mean, I think there's a high probability that, from what I've seen in the budget bills flying around, the moratorium is a bargaining tool, and it's, there's a high probability it's going to be in there. So even if we approve these rates or reduced rates in front of us this evening, there's still that two-year window where they're going to remain the same. And I think burden, I'm not wanting to place burden on builders, I don't want to place burden on developers. I've lived here 18 years, I've seen growth regardless of the economy. This is an incredible place to live. People will build here, people will buy homes here, people will eventually develop the commercial property downtown when we have enough rooftops to support some of the larger businesses that are willing to take a risk on our community. that are willing to take a risk on our community. As Councilwoman Dickey mentioned, there's a risk that that date may slide because when the debate started, it was June. Now what are we going into September? And that would be very awkward if we missed that opportunity when we've had this debate for, as long as we've had it. And at the end of the day, I think we really, as a council, really need to look at the big picture here. And I don't like charging anyone any additional money. And there's just so many unknowns about, is this going to retard or depress building or not? I think when the economy picks up, I think things are going to kind of start going back to normal. This is a highly desirable town. And we just, I need to face the facts. I'm not going to suggest anyone else here views things from my own perspective, but let's look at the landscape here. We have a population that has made it so perfectly clear to me that they are not in favor of primary property tax or secondary property tax.
I think we're screwing off the motion that's on the floor. Whether or not to continue this one, we need to get back on that topic.
I'm providing my rationale for why I think it's not important to continue. Is that...
Again, the main motion had a lot of pieces to, or the main discussion had a lot of pieces to it that are germane for the discussion, that may not be germane on the...
Very good. I'll yield. If I've strayed, I apologize. I yield the floor.
All right. Any other comments on the continuance? All right, we'll make a, we'll call for a roll call or what do you call it? Just a regular vote on here? Roll call on the, this would be an "aye" to continue this till our first meeting in September?
Vice Mayor Shambho?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Nay.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Nay.
Mayor Shlum?
Aye.
You don't get to move.
Thank you.
Five to two.
All right, so we'll continue this. Thank you, Julie. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is number 17, consideration of approving the installation of two speed humps in Courtside Villas Development, one on Sterling Way and one on Kingsway. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Residents of Courtside Villas have been concerned about cut through traffic in their subdivision for several years. The town took speed and volume counts and the HOA gathered signatures against over 75% of the affected area. And so I can tell you that in accordance with our neighborhood traffic management policy, this development does meet the criteria for speed humps. However, it does not meet the criteria for the town to pay for the speed humps, so the HOA will need to be responsible for the payment for these speed humps. Courtside Villas HOA has indicated that they are willing to provide the necessary funding. The location of these speed humps, right there and right there on Sterling Way and Kingsway, this subdivision was developed prior to the town's incorporation. It had no sidewalks, so pedestrians are forced to walk out in the streets. The distance from the house to the street curb is very short, shorter than we would allow under our current ordinances. And so you get cars in the driveway that take up most of that difference. So even if we put in sidewalks, you'd still have to walk out into the street to go around the cars. It's a relatively high-density residential home, has a fair degree of cut-through traffic, and there's a 90-degree bend right here that drivers tend to not slow down as they should for. By my understanding, the staff does recommend installation of these speed humps. We'd be working with the HOA. They've indicated that they would like to contract and put these in themselves at the current time. Happy to answer any questions on this.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone first in the public?
No, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Cantino?
Yes, I noticed that you're going to remove the arrow to make the left-hand turn on Sterling on the Kingsway. Are you planning on replacing that?
Mayor, Councilman Cantino, and that arrow in the plan may actually, you pointed it the wrong way, that's actually a curve arrow, not a...
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, what I'm saying is that in that arrow, you remove it and you still have kids or people flying down that street, they don't see that curve. Where are they going?
Mayor, Councilman Cantino, I think after the speed humps that they will be slowed down substantially. We could move that closer to the curve itself, but if the council would like us to do that, we hadn't really felt that it would be necessary. There's other signage there showing where the curve is. Our concern previously in having the sign there was that traffic coming down a big hill, you know, might not see that.
Okay. Down the corner down there, where it goes into the wash, there's been neighbors that have had cars come down and tear those pilings down. So nobody knows about the curve. That's my concern coming down Sterling because you're coming down a hill. And I'm just wondering if we're going to get ourselves into a heck of a mess if we don't do something like that.
We absolutely could relocate that sign rather than remove it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Randy, I have a question. The cut-through traffic just intrigues me in this one. And, you know, HOA's asking for it, so the homeowners that are going to have to deal with a speed hump are asking for a speed hump. But when you look at the aerial map, the only people who'd be cutting through are the people that live in that community. I don't know if that would be considered cut-through traffic unless, you know, folks are coming through from Fountain Hills Boulevard onto Kingsway. It certainly doesn't seem like a shortcut to me to have to weave their way through Courtside Villas. Is there really cut-through traffic in this subdivision?
Mayor, you know, and I'm pinching for Tom Ward on this, so I wasn't heavily involved in the analysis of the criteria being met. But this is a route that you can take to go from Saguaro to Fountain Hills Boulevard. So you can get cut-through traffic going between those two arterial streets. You can also get cut-through traffic coming through, coming from a couple of multifamily complexes that front on Fountain Hills Boulevard that are along Kingsway, that could, you know, that would want to come through this subdivision if they want to take Saguaro rather than go out to Fountain Hills Boulevard and then go down Fountain Hills Boulevard and then Saguaro.
That's what I could see is the multifamily at the end, but it's so close to Fountain Hills Boulevard, they would choose to come through the narrow streets of Courtside Villas. And it looks like it'd be a longer path. But, so in this case, the property owners, the homeowners association would pay for it. I suspect there's not a great deal of maintenance for the town to maintain it.
Mayor, that's correct. I mean, there's a few signs and some striping and, you know, long-term down the road, there's the asphalt.
And traffic here currently has posted speed limits and regular law enforcement would administer the, you know, administer tickets if somebody were speeding in this area if they were caught.
Mayor, that is correct.
And then the detriment to speed humps are, well, driving over them. And then law enforcement and emergency services having to slow down to get to, you know, people when you want them to speed, you want those people to speed and not have to slow down. I know Eagle Mountain, Mr. Kloster is here, has an abundance of speed humps that really like to rattle your vehicle. But I know for the fire department, it slows them down. Is that a concern? Is there comments from fire on that?
Mayor, I don't know whether Tom had contacted the fire department or not on this. For this subdivision, there are two ways into all parts of the subdivision. And so there is the alternate way in off of Fountain Hills Boulevard to get to all the streets. So, you know, the speed humps that will be installed are much less severe than the ones that are in Eagle Mountain, if you've driven those.
Sure. All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, I've seen some new speed humps in Mesa that accommodate the fire trucks. And if you look at the fire truck, the wheel spread on it is much wider than even in an SUV. And so what they've done is they've created these speed humps where there's a gap in the hump, right at that wheel spread. And so it's impossible for my vehicle or somebody else's vehicle to hit them and say, "Ah, you can just speed right through here." But yet it gives the fire department the availability to go on down that street without really slowing down, worrying about breaking their shackles by hitting those speed humps. Are you familiar with that design?
I'm familiar with the ones in Glendale who uses a similar design. I think maybe Mesa uses the Glendale design. It's called a speed cushion. And they have brakes in the speed hump that allow for fire trucks to go through without actually going over the speed hump, but they're too wide for most cars. So you can get one wheel in it, but the other one's going to go over the speed hump.
Yeah.
So we hadn't really considered that. These are fairly narrow roads and because there are no sidewalks, we need to hold the speed hump in from the edge.
Ah, okay.
And so we're already down to a relatively small amount of...
I was just hoping in future use of speed humps, if we put any more in Fountain Hills, that we start considering those or even remapping the ones we have so that the fire department doesn't have an issue.
Mayor, Councilmember Shambho, yeah, we will be doing that, I'm sure.
All right, good. Well, again, they're asking for it themselves, so the HOA board will have to deal with the homeowners if they're not happy here, as long as they're asking for it. I just wouldn't be in favor of the town paying for something like this. So I'm glad it doesn't fit within our constraints to ask us to do so. Any other discussion? There's no public on this one?
No, Mayor.
All right. What motion are we looking for here? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the installation of two speed humps with funding by the Courtside Villas HOA to be located on Sterling Way and Kingsway?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying "aye." Aye? Opposed?
Nays, seven to zero.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next item is 18. Thank you, Randy. Consideration of proposed strategy specifically to the utilization of the American Reinvestment Recovery Act, transportation funds allocated to the town by Mayor Couple Association of Governments and possible direction to staff. Rick?
Mayor, Council, we come with good news for you. We've been very successful in our efforts to petition and acquire funding that we can utilize for a very significant roadway project that we have going on Shea. That project is 95% designed. We originally applied for American Recovery and Reinvestment Funding and Stimulus Funding. As you remember, we were successful in being awarded a little over $1 million that was designated for the Shea project. In addition, we have applied for surface transportation money. Again, we were successful in acquiring money that we were able to put out on Shea. And then some months ago, we were notified that there were probably some unclaimed CMAC funding, air quality mitigation funds that could be used for sidewalk and bike lanes that we could also apply for. And likewise, we were again successful in doing that. It created a good situation for us in one case because we know that we can clearly meet our obligation out on Shea and adding that third lane and doing that work between Fountain Hills Boulevard and Palisades. But at the same time, what we found out is we don't have a home for about $671,000 worth of the ARRA money, the stimulus money. And we are looking for a home for that funding. And there are several possibilities out there, but I think the most viable ones we'd like to suggest to you tonight. We're not ready to make any kind of final decision on this, mostly because I haven't had a chance to talk to our Public Works Director. And I want him to be part of that equation and that discussion. I have had some chats with our town engineer, of course, our deputy town manager as to what some possibilities are. With regard to the chronology and how these funds interact with our budget and how their expenditure has some numbers for you, and also Randy is going to be presenting some numbers for you. But we didn't want to belabor this too much. We're, we want your feedback so we know what direction really to go forward with in expending these funds. But it's good news. We've been very, very successful in acquiring pretty much everything we've applied for up to this point. It's in excess of $3 million for highway improvement. And that is a great thing for our town. We're very grateful we've been able to obtain that. So with that, I'm going to turn some time over to Randy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We've really been looking at, you know, a number of months ago, I was in front of you and had recommended, and the council did approve, using our economic stimulus funds towards Shea Boulevard. Since that time, we were successful in getting additional grant money such that we actually don't need to use all of the stimulus funds for the Shea Climbing Lane project. We really have three potential alternatives for using those stimulus funds. And now recall that the stimulus funds are very, you know, are intended to stimulate the economy almost immediately. So they have a very tight deadline. They have a deadline of November 30th that we're supposed to use those, have those funds obligated, which means that it's ready to construct. And you've probably heard the term used shovel-ready. So basically, the project needs to be pretty close to be able to be constructed. However, the project needs to go through all of the normal ADOT and Federal Highway Administration channels, which is normally a three-year process, I think. They say two, but it really takes three on anything but the most, on most projects. We looked at three potential projects for this. The first one is on the Shea Climbing Lane, which we had originally planned to utilize those funds until we got additional funds for that. Using it on that, what we would do is, we are currently planning to put a micro-surface, which is a very thin seal, over the existing roadway. It'll cover up the stripes, but it's not much more than that. What we could do with these funds is to put a rubberized asphalt overlay over the entire roadway. Would give it a lot longer life, much better wearing surface, much quieter. And that project is, we're hoping to have our complete acceptance of it in the next days, weeks. So, I mean, we are right there at the end. At your next council meeting, we do anticipate bringing to you an intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for the funding of this project. And we do anticipate meeting the September 30th deadline for obligating the federal aid funds, not the ARRA funds, but the federal aid funds in this project. The second possibility, you remember earlier in the year, we looked at the Shea and Saguaro intersection. That's a part of a project that not only includes intersection improvements, but also includes the third lane going west on Shea, as well as an overlay of Shea Boulevard east of Saguaro. We are preparing those plans in federal aid format and they are currently at the 30% level. It would conceivably be possible that we could split out the overlay and proceed forward on that. There's a big difference because an overlay does not touch the existing dirt. It streamlines all environmental regulations, which really are what eat up a huge amount of time and effort on federal aid projects. So that's the second possibility. We might be able to get that project done in time. The third possibility, and I bring this up because the council had... The third possibility, and I bring this up because the council had, you know, had expressed a great interest in overlaying Saguaro. And I will tell you that Saguaro really needs work on it. However, we, at the current time, have no design project underway on this. We have no consultant selected. We have no plans even started. I do not see that there's any way that we could prepare those plans and get through the ADOT process in the time that we have allocated to be able to do the, to meet the time requirements of the ARRA funding. I wish I could tell you something different, but I just, I just don't think that that is possible. I mean, not only is that not shovel-ready, it's not started. So after those considerations, it was staffs thinking that probably the most feasible and project would be to add, to upgrade the Shea Climbing Lane to a rubberized asphalt overlay. But we'd love to hear from the council's opinions on, thoughts on this.
Mayor, once again, this is our last opportunity to have you together to talk about this specific issue for a while. And so we want to make sure that we got this in front of you as soon as possible. And I think it's pretty clear that there are a variety of roads within our community that require work, but there's only a very few that appear to lend us the latitude to meet the November thirtieth deadline. And so that's got to be a very strong consideration as well for that. So we're eager to receive any feedback from you. I'm not ready to conclude anything at this point because I still would like to talk to Tom and discuss this a little bit more, but this is a good opportunity to get feedback from you.
Rick and Randy, it's not, it's a little confusing. But the CMAQ funds were funds that another municipality, unfortunately for them, did not utilize. So came back into a pot, and we were smart enough to be in line to take that money to apply towards our projects, correct?
Mayor, actually, what happened is other communities asked to defer their projects to next year. So there's this money available for this year.
Okay. Because they weren't ready to spend it.
That's correct.
All right. And so, and those, those bad money, the CMAQ dollars, have now been applied by MAG to our hill climbing lane funding that they were funding out of the MAG monies. So now the, well, not the MAG monies, the ARRA monies that were, you know, apportioned through MAG, now those, that CMAQ dollars, that the equal amount of CMAQ dollars are coming out of the ARRA monies that we can now apply to some other project that's shovel-ready or can be obligated by September, November thirtieth, correct?
I think so.
Yes.
And don't forget, don't forget the STP money.
I should use my pointer. So this moved over there. So I think that's how it works. We've got monies back, we've got the ARRA monies to now place somewhere else, but we still have to meet that obligation date. So good. Good problem to have. And you went over the projects that we could obligate by that time. You didn't talk about the sidewalk project, or is that already allocated coming down Shea Boulevard, below Eagle Mountain? I saw it highlighted, I saw it up there, but.
Yes, Mayor, the map actually just showed projects, federal aid projects that we, and other projects that we, federal aid and RTP projects that we have on Shea Boulevard. That's a 2012 project. And at the current time, we have not even selected a consultant for it. We are, we will need to work with, we will need to have an intergovernmental agreement with Scottsdale on this because a third of the project is in Scottsdale. So that's a long lead time item, not even considerable for this.
To help me out, which projects can we meet that November thirtieth date?
We're confident we can meet the November thirtieth date on the Shea Climbing Lane by upgrading that to a rubberized asphalt overlay. We might be able to meet that date on breaking out a portion of the Shea and Saguaro improvements to do an overlay on the Shea east of Saguaro.
And that's also a seventy-thirty MAG project, isn't it?
That is a seventy-thirty MAG project, yes. It's a regional transportation plan. The federal government is not involved in it at all. It's a half-cent sales tax project is what it is.
All right. Thanks, Councilmember Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm probably not going to help the matters here, but one question I have is how can we spend this money if it wasn't in the budget? The, you know, I thought we had, we had to stay under a certain amount. Another question I have, was the rubberized something we were going to do anyway? Or is that just something we're kind of adding in so that we can spend the money? And of all, and I don't remember because this is so recent, I mean, I didn't even see this until yesterday. What did we, what capital projects did we approve? Remember, we had that Plan ABC thing when Tom was, and can we use some of this for that and not try to fit it into something that we're not quite ready to do? Because as you said, we have a lot of work that we need to do on roads. I love rubberized asphalt, but is it possible to use this money for what we, Plan B, whatever that one was with Tom? And how do we spend $670,000 more than we budgeted for? So that might be a Julie question.
Mayor, Councilwoman Dickey, let me take a first stab at it, and let Julie correct me. But the way federal aid projects work is we don't spend the money. The only money we actually spend is money that is our matching funds. Everything else is, we never see it. It never goes into our coffers at all. We will, we will be presenting you an IGA with ADOT at your next meeting, hopefully.
And that would apply for, that would be CMAC and ARRA money?
Yes. CMAC, STP, and AR, yeah, those are, all those federal aid fund projects. The funds go to ADOT, ADOT bids the contract, hires the contractor, manages the construction of the project. We never see any money. We become a liaison with them, but that's all.
Before we go on then, but when we did the, Mayor, when we did the budget and we talked about the fire station and other things that we were hoping to get money for, we had to put that in the budget so that it was there so in case we got the money, we could do it. So why is this different? You remember our capital improvement budget looked so big and it was like, wow. But that was only if ABC happened. So why doesn't this have to be in?
Maybe Julie can help. Or Randy, you have that one?
Mayor, Councilwoman D, I'm not sure that the funding for the fire station follows the same format.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There is a bit of a difference. The money that's coming in through the state or through MAG is actually going to stay at ADOT, and they'll pay for the project. The money that would come through for the fire station is a competitive grant. So that money would be awarded to the town and would have to come in and we'd have to budget for it. So there's a difference there. You know, the fire station money, if that gets approved, it's a grant from FEMA. It will come into the town. The other funds to pay for the recovery act through MAG, they do the whole thing. We're not involved at all, other than we send our portion to them and they take care of the rest of it. And we did include that in the budget. Thank you.
Randy, what are the constraints on the ARRA monies apart from being able to obligate it by November thirtieth? Are there not other capital improvement plan projects that could be considered?
The ARRA, these ARRA funds have the same constraints that the federal surface transportation program funds have on them.
They need to be in a tip or they needed to be on the major roads or?
Yes.
Collector or about.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. For my two cents, I believe the rubberized asphalt would be a wonderful thing, but for the town's sake, putting the overlay on Shea would be money better spent. Excuse me?
Shea and Saguaro.
Yes, Shea and Saguaro, the Saguaro project. I believe that, and rubberized asphalt's wonderful, but it sure would be nice if we could utilize all the money to go forward with that project.
So with that in mind, that project, so would it entail tearing up Saguaro like they had planned and have discussed with the bond, consideration of moving forward that bond that we decided not to? Would it do in essence that but a smaller piece of it?
Mayor, you're absolutely correct on that. Probably do fifteen to twenty percent of what we would have done in the bond project.
And is that something that would be obligated by November thirtieth?
Mayor, I just, I cannot imagine that that would be able to do that.
That's the sticking, that's the sticking point.
Okay, so that's not something we can consider for this money?
We've brought that up and put that in front of you because we know there is council support for doing that. And, you know, we just, it doesn't work for this money.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, I think you guys looked at the intersection of Shea and Saguaro. We talked about redeveloping that whole intersection. I know we've been doing some engineering work on that, and we did some study work on it last, last year. That would not be a November thirtieth, that wouldn't meet the November thirtieth deadline. Or would our matching funds be way more than what we've got to do that particular intersection?
Mayor, Councilman Arshinbo.
Yeah, get to that.
For someone, yeah.
I was hoping you'd pull that up.
There we go.
Okay. Mayor, Councilman Arshinbo, you're referring to this project right here and in particular, the portion out on the Saguaro Boulevard, the improvements there on Saguaro Boulevard, as well as at the Shea intersection. And we just received thirty percent plans on those. They aren't to federal aid standards, but we've received plans. We have no specs, no instrument, none of the environmental, none of the.
What you're telling me is no, it wouldn't meet the thirtieth, September, or November thirtieth. So the other proposal was to, was to do the overlay on this section of Shea Boulevard?
Yes, sir. You know, we're in the same boat on that, but because just in an overlay, we don't actually touch any dirt, we skip a whole lot of the environmental and we might be able to get that project done in time.
Is that, is that part, is this all part of one project?
Mayor, Councilman Arshinbo, currently it is.
So if, this area here obviously has to have an overlay done on it. It's starting to wear and tear and to toss up. Because I'm thinking, you know, this would be nice to have rubberized asphalt because you have some residents right in here. It would mitigate some of the noise and the traffic that they get coming up and down Shea Boulevard. But if this is starting to wear and tear, I certainly don't want to see that section of the street go, get deteriorating, go like we're dealing with. But that is, but it is a project that's going to happen, this is a project that's going to happen probably in the next two or three years, right?
Mayor, Councilman Arshinbo, yes. Some of the council decides to fund the local share of it. It is in design, it is at the thirty percent design. I would imagine we will be ready to construct the entire project probably in the next year and a half.
I'd truly like to do Saguaro Boulevard, but I can see we're not going to make that. So if I had my druthers, I guess I would go for the rubberized asphalt.
Councilmember Leger? Just a question. Which project that you're discussing has the highest probability for success in terms of meeting the deadlines and the design state, the rubberized asphalt?
Mayor, Councilwoman Leger, the rubberized asphalt on the Shea Climbing Lane. I mean, we, you know, I mean, we were actually going, you know, we're in the process of working on the IGA with ADOT.
Okay, so that has the highest probability of success. And I think I heard you say earlier that we were going to do some work there, but we were just going to put kind of a, kind of a slurry seal or a light coat on it, which says that the rubberized asphalt really isn't just throwing money away because it's going to give us a better surface that we don't have to repair sooner than later. And then you have the ancillary benefit of reduced noise in that corridor. You know, I have received a lot of emails from people along that area, interestingly enough, that have asked for rubberized asphalt. I never seriously considered it because it's such a luxury. So I don't think it's just like taking money from the government and spending it for the sake of spending it because it will, will help us with not doing future work in that road. And frankly, when you think about it, the Shea corridor that we're responsible for maintaining has the highest traffic flow of any street we have and that we're responsible for. So you believe that one has the highest probability of success?
Mayor, Councilwoman Leger, I absolutely do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thanks. Is slurry seal, is that something that needs a lot of prep and plans and things that we couldn't do? Like if we just wanted to fix Saguaro a little bit with a slurry seal? That whole area from Shea north?
Mayor, Councilwoman Dickey, we have not done any of the pavement analysis. We've not had, you know, our consultant do a pavement well, other than for the annual study that we do, but we haven't done in-depth analysis. But my recollection is that we're not thinking that a slurry seal is going to hold up very long on that section of Saguaro. It's really getting to the point, due to the clay materials underneath it and the water and the age of it, that it really needs an overlay. But really substantially more than we could do in this project really needs it too, so.
Councilmember Hanson, did you have something?
I remember.
I know.
Randy, on that section of Shea, if it, if the work was done there now, and then we go back in the next two or three years and do the rest of the work, would what was done now get torn up at all or, I mean?
Councilman Hanson, you're referring to this section, Shea and Saguaro?
Yeah, the part that you said you thought you might be able to have done by November thirtieth.
What we would plan to do is we'd plan to split out the section east of Saguaro and mill in rubberized asphalt over that and then stripe that. The downside is because we don't have the third lane going west of the Saguaro intersection, we still have to do something to keep the traffic out of that third lane until we can take them through the intersection.
Okay, so you just made the case for the downside, which takes us back to the rubberized asphalt.
So that would be kind of a hodgepodge project. Okay, and that was the fear, I think, Rick, we talked, was just not wanting to screw up that entryway and we have a larger overall project. I like the idea of applying the dollars there because we already have that in our capital improvement plan to do the project and utilize those there, but it doesn't seem like that might be the right timing. All right. Very good. Do you have some idea of direction or we've had discussions, would you like anything further?
We'd like to have a few more discussions, but we certainly wanted to get your feedback tonight. This isn't something we need a formal, I don't think at least we need a formal action or motion from you.
We want the rubber to hit the road.
Mr. Mayor, there's no formal actions necessary tonight, but we have very conflicting discussions between MAG and ADOT with respect to the urgency with which the IGA needs to be approved. At one point, we thought it was by the twenty-first, and at another point, we thought it was September eleventh. We have no confidence in any one of those dates and may be calling you all together for some sort of telephonic to have an IGA approved if MAG tells us to have a deadline shorter than your first meeting in September. We may also need to make the work study on the eighth, a special session for approval of that. But because ADOT doesn't move as quickly as the rest of the world, we were not able to get an answer from them in a timely fashion for tonight's meeting.
We probably could have that IGA ready a little bit quicker, but there is some indemnification issues that need to be worked out. issues that need to be worked out. Boilerplate language that keeps finding its way into this type of document that apparently Andrew has to keep over and over again like Groundhog Day, reliving this whole scenario of getting this out. Some of the indemnification issues include holding the town or at risk in the event of anything that goes wrong with the project. This would be okay if ADOT was a pass-through agency, but where they are doing the work, this language doesn't seem to express that ADOT's willing to carry that risk. And the other one has to do with funding. If somehow, I guess, our funding disappears from ARA or any other source, we're still obligated to pay those funds. So Andrew's been working with the AG's office, and optimistic we'll be able to work that out and bring that IGA to you pretty soon. But we'll let you know if that, we need to call you all together to do that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, good. Thank you very much, Randy, for standing in for Tom. He'd probably be going over a great deal of this anyways. Our next item is a summary of council requests and report on recent activities by our town manager. I guess I skipped the council discussion direction to the town manager, which we seem to kind of always merge these two together anyways. Anything we've asked of you to cover the next meeting or subsequent meeting?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Councilmember Dickey?
I just wanted to mention Mr. Koster's remarks, and maybe we could get some information about, you know, what the process is, when they're, you know, we have risk management insurance, what happens, what are we allowed to disclose? You know, there's a lot of stuff about lawsuits and things like that. You know, maybe get some information about some other municipalities also, and, you know, find ways to communicate some of the things that happen when there's a lawsuit, and the decisions, how we make decisions as public servants and not for private gain and things like that. And maybe we can get something out there like that.
The other items that Councilmember Leger reminded me is the continuance information are related to the continuous development fees. So every council member should get questions to staff so we can, within the next couple of weeks, so that we can have a productive meeting in September. And next item, summary of council requests and report on recent activities. Anything more? Rick, anything more? And I just wanted to mention, reminder that Fountain Hills Downtown Visioning Final Session is tomorrow, I'm sorry, Saturday, August 22nd, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, Saturday, the 22nd, at the Fountain Hills Unified School District's Learning Center, not at the Community Center, and not here at Town Hall, but over at the Fountain Hills Unified School District's New Learning Center, if they want to show that off. It's a nice facility that has just opened up, and that's at the high school campus at the corner of Fountain Hills, I'm sorry, Golden Eagle and Palisades Boulevards. And then remember, we got Moving the Park, Ballad of the Stars, Oktoberfest, and Homecoming Parade and Tailgate Party coming up in September and October as well. So look forward to that. Do we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Oh, thank you. Good point. We've got a motion.
Sorry, a motion.
And, yeah, we can do it in discussion. Exactly. We've got a second discussion. There's discussions that there's no council meeting, and the first, our first meeting in September is canceled. Just a reminder for that before we adjourn. All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Give me a point.
Good job.